Sandy Eggers.
Here.
Rodney Galton.
Here.
Karina Torrey here.
All right, and we'd like to send a special thank you to the town council for making it on three courses of board so we can conduct business again.
Absolutely.
Very nice that it worked out that way. Okay, first item is adoption of the October 2nd, 2023, regular meeting minutes.
Oh, okay, regular meeting minutes from last month. That would be you two because I was happily in Freiburg.
Yes, motion to adopt minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, citizens' participation and public comment. There has been a letter submitted for the record from a concerned neighbor on Mashentuck, and the town staff has been in touch with them, and there is no activity occurring. So, we do want that submitted for the record, though. It's from a, do you want to just give a quick rundown?
Yeah, so.
I don't think we need to have it read in the record.
So, it's from a Consetta R. Cottin at 115 Mashentuck Road. She's concerned about an abutting property, 175 Mashentuck Road, and some of the activity. This letter is on the town's website under, with our agenda and packet. It's a citizen's comment, so anyone is welcome to read through it. It's a concern about activity, but also kind of crosses the line into a civil matter. So, the town is aware of this, have spoken with the property owner, have let them know that certain activities do require permits. They are working on those permits, and there's no activity that we're aware of currently.
Okay, you have been out there, so.
Yep.
But we do want that in the record. Thank you so much. Okay, first item would be unfinished business, application 23-1574 of Passay Development for three-lot subdivision at 325 Snake Meadow Road.
Good evening. For the record, Paul Tewilliger with PC Survey Associates. It's application, well, you weren't here last week.
I was not here.
So, I will go over it again. It's about seven-acre lot, and we want to create three lots out of it. We're going to have a, an 80,000-square-foot lot where the existing house was. They have since torn it down because it was in disrepair.
That did disappear fast. I did notice that.
Yeah. And then, there'll be like a just-under-two-acre lot below it, and then a 3.3, something-acre lot off to the west of that. These two lots have frontage on Hubbard Road, and this lot has frontage on Snake Meadow Road, but we're going to put in a common driveway across this corner lot to access these other two lots because there's a brook down here that crosses Hubbard Road, and we want to stay as far away from it as we can. There's a stone wall that runs back from the road in this area, so we're just going to butt against that stone wall and then curve in and split off to these two lots here, and there'll be a common driveway easement across the backside of this lot. This lot here on the corner will have its own driveway coming in off of Hubbard Road to go right into a new house that's going to be located in the area where the existing house was. Activity within your jurisdictional area is the driveway and through here. This, the septic system is within 200 feet of a wetland that's located on the adjacent property, but we're well over 100 feet away from that wetland with where the proposed septic system is. Majority of the improvements on this corner lot are over 200 feet from the wetlands. The clearing limit for the driveway in here, we kept about 75, 70 to 75 feet off the wetland, so there'll be a vegetative buffer in between. During construction, we'll have erosion control silt fence between the driveway and the wetland area to protect it.
All right, Rodney, you had them, saw it last month when they presented it.
Mm-hmm.
And had more of a chance to look, so we'll defer to you on a lot of this.
Yes, so my concern when I look at the plan is I would prefer to see some sort of erosion control, basically the entire clearing limit that's closest to the brook there.
Oh, between where it ends here and where.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see a continuous.
I can connect that through.
Yeah, I would like to see a continuous row right through there.
Yeah, that would be fine. If you, if you notice the contours, there's like a, it like goes up before it goes down.
Yeah.
I, I just didn't think it would run that direction, but it's, we can run silt fence in there.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it, to me, it just makes sense.
Yeah.
That way, we avoid any sort of issue.
Yeah, yeah, that's an easy fix. We can do that.
What else did the staff have?
Okay, so Dave Capassion did provide Paul with comments. Most of those have been addressed directly on, on this plan. This is an updated plan from the original. It does show the anti-tracking pads on both of the driveways. We would probably see easement language at a later date. That wouldn't actually be something that holds it up at this point, but probably something we would want to see closer to even with P&amp;Z for the subdivision itself. Sightline clearing for the driveways may need to occur. The applicant has acknowledged that. It, it's not reflected on the plan, but that is an item that would be dealt with directly with our engineering department with the driveways as they get approved.
Well, sorry for interrupting.
Yep.
So, would, would the sightline clearing have to occur on Hubbard as well?
It, it would, it would be mainly on Hubbard.
It would be Hubbard because that's where the driveway entrances are.
Yeah, so it, I believe mainly to, between the two driveways is the, and in the immediate areas within probably 10 to 15 feet of the, of the driveway. You don't want to have the trees blocking that view when you're queuing in and out.
Yeah, I'm just worried about clearing to the west.
Understood.
Towards that brook.
Yeah.
So, I think that's where that limit of clearing would have to come in. If there's our trees that are identified, we would want to see E&amp;S control silt fence up, up at that edge when this, if a stump's removed or anything like that.
Something over there.
If it's just brush.
I don't really think there's anything really in there that needs.
It may be just kind of like a scrub brush in that area, which would be.
Basically, there is one tree somewhere in this area here, in this lot corner, but I, I believe it's, it's far enough back to where it's, where the, where the sightline is, is, is on the roadside of it, so it wouldn't be an issue.
And staff did visit the subject property. We've been working with the contractor with the, the existing house that had to be demolished.
Right.
It was in extremely poor shape, as well as the, took a look at the brook area and just kind of walked through there. It seemed very healthy. It was nice, flowing unobstructed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think all, that's all the more reason to make sure that's a continuous line of erosion control.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
Well, how do we feel about if he has to clear in that wetland for sightline?
I think that.
I don't, I don't foresee that.
I don't think they should remove any, any slope or anything.
Because it drops down from the road, so.
Okay.
Anything that would be in there, I mean, there's no big trees or anything in that area that would have to come out.
Just brush?
It's basically brush.
Okay.
And I think it could just be trimmed, you know, close to the road, and it would be effective.
Okay.
I don't think anyone wants to see any stump coming out of there is what we're down to.
No, no, that's.
That's it exactly. We just don't want to see.
Right, right.
Yes.
Any stumping, so that would be no stumping to the west side.
Nothing beyond that clearing.
Of the driveway.
Yes.
So, it would be a matter of cleanup.
Yeah.
But not stumping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, no stumping. To the west. Continuous E&amp;S along the driveway. Anything else you can think of on that?
No, I don't think so. Unless Karina has anything.
And just for the record, to let you know, we did get approval from the health department. They did review it and gave their blessing on it.
Is, do we have record of that in the file?
Not yet. It might be with our building office, but.
Okay.
We'll have to receive a copy before moving forward.
So, you would want, that is part of your motion, then? So, you want the stumping.
Yes.
The E&amp;S. So, we've been looking for a motion to approve with no stumping to the west of the driveway, continuous E&amp;S along the entire shared driveway area, and that the health department approval be in place.
Yes. That's a motion?
Okay, just a second. Motion's made and seconded to approve application 23-1574 contingent upon no stumping to the west of the shared driveway, a continuous of E&amp;S system along that driveway, and that the health department permit be in place. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Okay, just give me one second. I gotta switch the camera.
Yep.
One way in production.
Two South Shore, that's like the very, very beginning?
Yeah.
Does South Shore's road start like right at the other road, or does it come in a bit and then start?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
This one, it's, it's one of the ones on like the main leased properties, and I'm going to pull it up for you guys. It's one of the last lots on the, like Sheridan Leased Properties to Lake, on the eastern side of the lake, toward, at almost the very south portion of it, so just hold on one second.
All right, so it's application 23-1576 of Margaret and Kevin Johnston.
Yep.
Demolition and reconstruction at Two South Shore Road.
Yep, and their representative couldn't make it here tonight, so we, I did go over it with staff. This one does have a comment from Dave Capassion, and I can give you guys hard copy or the, would you like the street file for the bigger copy?
Yeah. Might as well.
May as well have you, you're in the middle.
Yeah.
So, this is what I would say is one of our kind of common ones, knock-down, rebuild type of ask for Alexander's Lake. You have an existing cottage. They are looking to expand said cottage, so what you see, oh, let me share this. I thought, hold on. Okay. So, what you, what you see up on the screen there, that's existing cottage. You see that it's non-conforming in regards to some of the setbacks. It also has some existing, you know, structures such as retaining walls and patio areas that are closer to the lake than we typically want, but they are existing. Go down. This is the proposed cottage. The proposed cottage is more conforming in regards to setbacks pretty much all the way around. One of the asks from the town engineer, because there is a proposed paver patio, like impervious surface is called out. We're asking just for a detailed specification, construction, installation details on the proposed pervious patio. Not that it would really contribute that much, but one, one of the reasons we want to have something like that with the plan, even if it's a supplemental, is so everyone knows exactly what impervious is. It's not just a stamped concrete pad. It needs to be pavers and allow, allow, you know, water to get through or some other type of material that is going to allow infiltration. The, in case any of you are interested, the existing cottage is about 40% lot coverage. The proposed is at 42% lot coverage, so not much of a difference there. The setbacks, works on all, all the setbacks. Pretty straightforward one. We recently had one in this area, I think I brought it up to you guys a while ago. It was a very large pine tree, kind of hugged the property line between this cottage and the, the one on Lot 36. It went down in a storm, and it caused one of the existing retaining walls, mainly on Lot 36, that was like a creosote-treated timber wall, to just heave out. We worked on that one as a repair, and the repair, you can't, unfortunately, you can't repair with a creosote-treated wall. So, use this same base and did a versalock wall in the same spot. This, this one is calling out that 251 line, that, you know, the hotly debated item, so we want to make sure that that's on all the applications, in particular for Alexander's Lake, 251, and that's the start of the rear setback is 251, although some of that comes at odds with some of the lease language, which says the edge of the water. Zoning says 251, so 251 is whether or not it's in the water, out of the water, it's 251. I believe at the time of doing this, the water was further out, but we go off that number. That's what it controls.
I know that they have very unique regulations, but all we can hope for is to try to make things conform as it comes before us. It, that kind of appears like it's actually a little more incon, it is more in conformance?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, the, like the paver patio, for instance, is not an item that would have to meet setbacks because it's impervious.
Right.
If the, for some reason, they wanted to put a solid structure there, that would not work for us.
Right. And they're keeping the existing well?
This one has an existing wall, well, I believe they are hoping to keep the existing well, and exists, you know, there's an existing sewer connection. Obviously, that will have to get retied in.
Right, yeah.
But I believe they are hoping to maintain the well. We have not received anything from the health department from that. There's very limited options in regards to the well and the well location here.
Yes, yeah, that's why I was curious about it. Not much going on.
No, it looks like that one's simpler than some of them.
Yes.
It doesn't look like they went wild.
No.
And I, I don't have the picture here. The architect actually came in. I was pleasantly surprised to have a full-scale model of the cottage.
Really?
Doesn't really weigh anything in terms of the wetlands, but not many times do you get a foam, a foam core, you know, model.
That's kind of cool.
You know, the last time I saw those were in design school, so.
Yes.
You know, that was, it was kind of neat.
We all had to do those in school.
Yep.
So, nothing to change with it?
No, I don't think so.
Karina? Is that a motion?
There's a motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded to approve application 23-1576 of Margaret and Kevin Johnston as it is presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, new business, just the one item?
Just the one item. It came in.
23-1577 of Gavin Sheehan.
Yep, and hold on, I'm going to share this one as well.
Breakneck Hill.
So, this one just came in, the applicant's representative from Killing Engineering, unfortunately, was feeling a little under the weather, could not make it here tonight. Had called me to go over it. So, this is a undeveloped lot off Breakneck Hill that would consist of a wetland crossing. There is, according to the application, an existing gravel crossing right now, and they would be looking to improve said crossing. And because of slopes, you're also looking at the max of 14-degree slope. We are looking at pavement, having to pave and go through there.
Where are we other than on a mountain?
So, this, this is at almost the end of Breakneck Hill towards, what, Chestnut?
Okay.
On the left-hand side is a lot of the land owned by Tony Pusenella.
Yep, yep.
Which had a forestry project that just closed, actually. On the right, on the right-hand side, this is just a wooded area here, so pretty significant in size portion right up at the front, wetland. It does look, you know, on a cursory review, and this is something that I still want to get comments and feedback from Dave on. It's probably the best area to enter from, being at the extreme north of the site, just because of topography.
But that's one of the widest sections of wetland right there, right?
It is one of the widest section of wetland, so that's, and that's, I'm going to leave that to Killing Engineering to make that full presentation to it. One of the items, I can tell you right now, is going to be, from a staff point of view, prudent alternatives, right? So, it, does this make sense and why, right? They need to illustrate that with the application, so.
You know, I think we should try to get out there if we can.
Well, I think we should.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we should, we should try to take a look at that narrow, that narrower section of wetland, too.
Agreed, agreed. I have, I have not been to the subject property, so.
Tell them we want options.
Yeah.
So, are we looking to make a motion to receive and schedule with a site walk?
We certainly are.
Site walk, no public hearing?
Second.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to table application 23-1577 to receive it without a public hearing, but with a site walk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So, our next meeting, I believe, is on the 4th, December 4th. I have a, and we have Thanksgiving coming up. I, I wouldn't be available on the 27th. I know a lot of times we do the Monday before. I will be taking a test in Massachusetts.
Maybe we should try to get a little earlier on a Monday while it's not getting any brighter in the afternoons.
No.
We move around real quick the next few weeks.
Or, or we, or we do it on a weekend.
Or do it on a weekend. Weekend might make more sense, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Which I'd be available on a weekend. We'd have to, we need 48 hours' notice because it's a special meeting, kind of site walk.
Yep.
But if we wanted to, we could probably do it as soon as this Saturday or Saturday after.
Yeah, this Saturday won't work for me.
Okay, what about the 18th?
I have nothing on the 18th.
Saturday, the 18th?
It depends on the time.
What works for you for time?
Later in the day. I'm coming back from vacation.
Then maybe we should.
On the 19th, so I mean, if we do it like, you know, noon-ish, eleven or noon-ish.
Oh, okay.
I mean, like light gets in at like 1:00 AM, so, and I'm coming from the West Coast.
Yep. Um, maybe we better.
So, would you prefer the, on the 18th, or would you rather push?
A different day.
18th is fine, as long as we do like maybe 11 or noon.
Okay.
Because I'm going to be a little, I think, messed up with time zones and stuff like that.
Want to do noon?
Noon?
Noon on the 18th?
If that works for you guys.
Noon, November 18th. Sounds good to me.
Perfect, and I, I'll send out a kind of reminder.
Yep.
Well, it'll get posted, but I'll try to send you guys out a reminder the, the Friday before, just.
All right, I guess this is all yours now because we've got the authorized agent and then.
Yep.
The whole situation with the Myers property.
Well, so the, so the authorized agent one, and, and I'll point you guys to the end of your packet, I can bring it up on the screen as well, too. I am going to probably, no, this will be fine. So, one negative with the smaller laptop takes a second. Okay.
Like that's still, Breakneck Hill.
Okay, so this isn't, obviously, this is not a rehashing of the whole show cause hearing. There was a show cause hearing earlier in the year. The Wetlands Commission found that there was indeed a violation and requested certain corrective actions be made with that. I do have the original file here, if any of you guys are interested with that. Just, you know, rehashing it, I tried to take some photos of the subject area that was right near the area of wetlands that was delineated by the soil scientist, Joe Thoreau, which was one of the requirements of the cleanup operation. Let me just, I have to, let's go in slow here.
Oh, shit.
And I, and I have some totals here. Yeah, so.
That's a lot.
The cleanup, obviously, like we have, you know, the different areas, you know, there was a mixture of car parts, construction debris, some tires, some, some of the tires, we, you know, figured were as old as from like the 30s and 40s. Mr. Myers, Kurt Myers, we worked with him, he was the property owner. He was great in terms of working with staff, open door, let us know everything. He provided all of the dumpster receipts, scrap metal receipts, everything. I think there's just a couple outstanding from the very, very end, some of which might not even have been fully created yet, but.
You know, you don't usually get that kind of a result that quickly, do you?
Yeah.
So, the cleanup, there's some photos of the cleanup from November 3rd. This was kind of the end of the cleanup. This cleanup is obviously only consistent of items that were identified in or near the wetlands that were potentially impactful of said wetlands. Joe's delineation did note that there was historic fill right up to the edge of the wetlands. In, in many cases, we, we tried to bring everything down to the original grade where there was a, albeit a man-made swale that was part of the mink farm, that was completely filled in with trash and debris, if, if not mounding over. That was brought all the way down to what we felt was pretty much undisturbed soil, along with the banking for it. There is a kind of a natural berm between that drainage swale that you see in that picture there, right here. There's a banking between it and the actual brook, the actual wetlands. Some of the things you'll see in this photo, there's a little dirt pile still here that was debris that was scraped away, that was removed after this. They had brought in a truck, you know, a triaxle dump, loaded it all up to get removed properly. I haven't had a receipt yet, though, for that.
How, how were they stabilizing this?
So, this was stabilized with a combination of mulch. So this was stabilized with a combination of mulch, um, um, like a ru- a very organic mulch, uh, mix, uh, that basically soil. And, uh, a conservation seed mix.
Okay.
Being the time of year, you're probably looking at, it's gonna be springtime for that mix to really take hold. But it seemed the most appropriate. I- in terms of downstream, there's, there's other, or down that swale as it goes further along. There's other, um, areas where there's, you know, briars and other organics and stuff that have kind of grown up over time. That, um, area I don't think, uh, would be very subject to erosion, like, to get down to the wetlands. It would have to go on some, some type of journey. The Myers property has, I believe, transferred hands, um, since, uh, this part of, you know, when we do these, uh, uh, wetlands decisions, we, with, uh, corrective actions, I follow them on the land record, so they come up under title search. So we were working with the buyers and the sellers, um, um, their attorneys and, and, and the property owner to make sure that this was done. So there was a motivating factor, you know, for them to fully comply. Um, we feel that they did comply. Some of the numbers that are come in, and these are, I would say, low, on the lower end of, of, of the totals. Four thousand one hundred and eighty pounds of tires, seven thousand one hundred and forty pounds of scrap metal, nine thirty-yard dumpsters, all of which, I think there was only like one or two that were on par for weight. They were all overloaded.
Right, yeah.
Eighty-two point five eight tons. Um, that doesn't include that last, um, uh, triaxle load of all that dirt.
Right.
Um, as well as some additional tires that were, at the very end, we were like, oh, we missed some, you know, in one spot. So, uh, the Myers utilized, uh, um, a blockaway, um, construction, Corey Morrison, um, to do most of the heavy lifting machine work and everything. And he was also, um, good i- in terms of being very communicative with the town. And, um, you know, was meticulous to make sure that everything that left that site left appropriately. So, uh, the last thing in the packet is a copy of the, um, release for the notice of violation and cease and desist. He's a pretty boilerplate. This went by, you know, uh, the town attorney, um, to just make sure that, you know, um, it was, it was just subject to the debris and everything that is known, um, that was part of said order. It's not an all-encompassing, the property is clean, it's, it's as clean as we know it to be, um, in that area. Mainly, there's some older structures outside of the upland review, um, that, um, have other concerns, um, but were not part of this. So I'm not saying it's completely, um, void of those. I believe their closing occurred today. I've made myself available, if need be, to walk through it and go through it with them. No one reached out, so. I'm hoping it was a clean transaction, um, uh, but ultimately, I, you know, I do want to thank, you know, Kurt Meyer, uh, for being, uh, responsible and, uh, cleaning up a mess that probably outdated him, uh, from that property. Does anybody have any questions on this one? I do have the file with all the receipts. There are more photos, um, that we have, um, and of course, the original, um, show cause information and the report from, uh, the soil scientist, um, regarding, um, the delineation. Should be noted, the delineation was done prior to all the material being removed.
Right.
Um, uh, but I believe it was done, it could be.
The only thing that, um, we should probably keep in mind is if we get a substantial rain event.
Yep.
You should probably just go out there just to make sure that none of that is making its way.
If we get a substantial rain event?
Yeah.
When the next one comes?
Um, yeah, I tend to keep a shortlist on different construction projects, um, or even restoration projects of, um, you know, when it rains, we go out to look at and just, uh, deal with. So if there is an event scheduled or we find ourselves, uh, in one, particularly a rain event, I will try to make contact with the current property owner. Obviously, I'll have to get permission.
Yes, you will, yeah.
To go on the property, um, but we can work with them.
Because that's a, that's a fairly large, open area.
Yep.
I know it's relatively flat, but.
Yeah.
With some of the rain volumes we've been getting, it just.
That's the thing, though. That makes, that makes very good sense, though, John, to try to have a few of those places like that in mind to keep an eye on because there's nothing normal about the rainfalls we've been having.
No.
And things are moving that never moved before.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we've, we've been working with our engineering department and even our highway department, um, to go through, particularly as they relate to the roads and driveways, um, because we have seen some areas that were in, what, what appeared to be pretty good shape and then.
And now they're not.
Yeah, I mean, or, you know, driveways that just went right through their lifespan in terms of, uh, getting undermined and, and whatnot, so.
Okay. I'm impressed, though, they got a clean, but like I said, I knew they were selling it, so that's probably.
Yeah, I'm sure that's.
That had to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what drove them to do that.
Okay, anything else?
Um, I have nothing else. I don't see, um, a town council liaison.
Tomorrow's election day.
Tomorrow is election day. They may be busy, um, uh, so, um, if, that's all I have.
Okay, motion do adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.